Hello, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Pembroke Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. Today, John Brown will be interviewed. John will have two minutes to introduce himself, speak about his background, his qualifications, and why he's running for office. He will then be asked a series of questions, which will include an exchange, a back and forth between him and myself. Each question and exchange should be between three and four minutes. He will then have a two-minute closing statement. The responses and closing statements will be timed as well. John will see the time clock for reference on his screen. Let's get started with the opening statement. John, welcome, and you have two minutes.
Great, thank you. My name is John Brown, candidate for reelection to the Pembroke Select Board. The reason I want to continue being your Select Board member is for the fact that the job that we started in town is not complete. Through the efforts of the town manager and the board, we have aggressively pursued grant money for the town of Pembroke on the state and federal levels. I was successful in hosting a firefighter grant workshop in town where over 50 fire departments throughout the Commonwealth were able to participate. I was named to the Town Manager Search Committee with my colleague Dan Trubuco, that was responsible for the recommendations for our new town manager. I was liaison for the grant writer we had in town for several different projects, the Memorial Park, Bleach Streets, Town Landing, which unfortunately, these products were put on hold because of COVID-19. I'm liaison for the Council of Aging. With the help of one of my other colleagues, we continued giving our seniors a voice in our community. Mainly, I have had the opportunity to be the liaison for the people of Pembroke to the Select Board's office, where up until the pandemic, I would go to people's houses or conduct office hours in Town Hall weekly and be able to talk to the people to see how the town can help them. I want to thank PAC TV for giving me the opportunity to answer questions today and to the people of Pembroke for the encouragement of running for reelection to the Select Board June 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to the questions. So, question number one, John. Given what we have experienced in the past year, what are the most valuable lessons learned and how can they be utilized in managing the town moving forward?
Well, the best thing that we've learned is that we're resilient. As a people, as a community, we can adapt, adjust, and move on from there. It's concerning that this has been going over a year. And after the last pandemic, over 100 years ago, you know, it took three years for the whole country to recover. I just worry about how do we, you know, we move forward? How do we get the financial benefits of an economy that's been kind of dragging because people have been isolated for so long? We just have to work with each other to try to find solutions so we can ask for what's needed, especially for the town. And there's a few examples I have probably for other questions where we should be asking for money because other towns and cities are going to need it too.
You mean asking for assistance money, like COVID relief money?
Yeah, but there were certain things that we had for the community center and for public safety buildings that we lost money because of COVID. So, it was only a one-time deal. The government had to do something with it to help out other communities. So, we were like, okay, so we lost it. As far as I know, we lost it, but they can't find it. So, as long as we can ask again for these same funds down the road, since the current budget is looking at about $46 billion, $47 billion for the Commonwealth, and then, of course, we get our share out of that for our population.
Right, okay, thank you. I agree, resilience is something that we've all been, I think, very lucky to have. Question number two. In your opinion, what aspects of the Pembroke town government need fixing the most and the least?
Right now, the least is our town manager. Mr. Shennard has been phenomenal. Like I said, I was glad I was on that search committee on seeing how he can push us forward and the things he did while he was in Natick on how we can grow as a community and just be persistent and ask for what we need. Not just what we want, but what we need to further on the town projects or what we need to do properly so our citizens don't have to take the hit on the taxes. What do we need fixing on? Well, there's a lot of stuff besides, you know, personally with physical, you know, structural stuff that we have to do within town. In and of itself, I mean, it's because of COVID, I try not to delve on what we're trying to fix personally or personnel-wise because everyone's going through a tough time right now. So, I want to make sure I give anyone the benefit of the doubt, especially for this year, on how we can proceed forward. And if someone wants to stay within town or be part of this community, I welcome any and all to participate.
Okay, great, thank you. And let's go on to the third question. There are pros and cons to having those with long tenure sitting on an elected board versus those who may be newly elected to a position. What is your view on board turnover?
It all depends because of what we have with our board now. I said, I respect what Mr. Trubuco has done because he's actually our senior member of the board. And that institutional knowledge has been so helpful to me in my first term on how things work with the board, what kind of back and forth I can have with Mr. Trubuco and other board members, and how can we further our own thoughts and feelings and whatever our own life experiences have done to push what's best for town? So, like I said, I'm only a first-termer, but I said for town government stuff, I was on advisory for three years. So, I have six years in town government as an appointed board member and also an elected board member.
Okay. Question on people that are just brand-new into a position. How long does it take to get kind of up to speed on all the things you need to know if you're on the Select Board in Pembroke?
That's a great question because for me, being in public service nearly for volunteering or whatever for almost 30, over 30 years now. I started young, so it was kind of old hat for me where I just need to know what the procedures were first, and it clicked with me. For others, it might take a little longer. You know, they don't understand what should be going on or they were another member on another, in another board, or they're really, really new and they're not sure how town government works. But, you know, they were fortunate enough to be elected or appointed that as long as they're willing to do the work, I don't see a problem with anyone, you know, trying within that first year to get the knowledge down of what it's actually done in Pembroke.
Okay, thank you. And now, I'm going to give you a 20-second-to-answer, rapid-response question. Are you ready?
Okay, I'm ready.
If you were given $3 million to spend in any way in and for the town of Pembroke, how would you spend it?
Oh, that's awesome. Since knowing all our infrastructure needs, it would have to be part of that. Like I told you earlier, that the $3 million that we lost, that looks like that we lost for the community center, that'd be one thing to make sure we can help out with that. But also know that there's needs for the library, there's needs for public safety. I mean, have to try to divvy it somehow to be beneficial to all departments. Because as a board member, you know, I'm not just worried about one issue or one area, or the fire, the police, DPW, the library, or even Town Hall members. I'm worried about it all because I represent all.
Okay, perfect. That was, you got your 20 seconds, so it's basically infrastructure was your answer to that one. That's wonderful. And now, you're going to go on to your two-minute closing remarks. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm John Brown, asking for your vote, June 26th, to continue being your representative to the Select Board. I would like to thank PAC TV again for this forum to answer questions on several different topics. I hope I'm able to gain your support to continue doing the work we have just begun to do to move Pembroke forward as a leader on the South Shore. I love our town of Pembroke and the people who reside here. Our community has made it very welcoming to myself and my family. I've seen firsthand the generosity and friendship that the people of Pembroke bring to this community. I've had a great opportunity to be one of your elected officials, and I would like to continue to do that for the next three years. Throughout my public service career, I know I'm elected by some to represent all. And I'll always keep that mindset because the people of our town are the most important for what we are trying to accomplish now and in the future. With your help and support, we'll be able to move the needle forward and accomplish goals the town has set for itself, the betterment of our community. I ask that you please consider voting for me, John Brown, on June 26th to continue being your voice in the town of Pembroke. If you have any questions, concerns, please feel free to contact me through my Facebook page, @JohnBrownPembrokeSelectBoard, or email me at jbrown946@gmail.com for campaign questions, or you can call me on my cell at 571-235-2015. Thank you, and see you around town.
Thank you, John. Thank you for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. So, we're going to get started with your opening statement. Tommy, you're going to have two minutes. Go ahead.
Julie, thank you for having me. My name's Thomas Driscoll. I've lived in Pembroke for 15 years. I've been married to my wife, Jennifer Boyle Driscoll, who's also lived here for, or who's lived here for 15 years. We have three children, Thomas Jr., who has passed away. He would have been 14. Matthew Driscoll, who is 12, currently in sixth grade. And Maggie Driscoll, who is 11, currently in fifth grade. I have been an ironworker since 1999 when I graduated the apprenticeship, where I entered the apprenticeship and later graduated. In 2005, I joined the Army Reserve where I served as military police. I was in the military for nine years. I've been with a lot of different places. I've experienced a lot of different things. After I got out of the Army, or still in the Army at the time, I settled in Pembroke, which would have been 15 years ago. Here, I've served on the Board of Health for 10 years as chair, three years on the Rec Commission, and two years, or I'm sorry, three years on the Solid Waste Recycle Committee as a vice chair. I've also been on the ZBA. I look forward to helping Pembroke grow as a community. There is a lot of good plans going around out there. And I would hope to be, I would like to be a part of that in helping Pembroke expand, grow into the future. I hope to bridge from people that just moved into town and people that have been here for years. I hope to be a voice for them. With that, let's get going, Julie.
All right, thank you, Tommy. Let's go to first question. Given what we have experienced in the past year, what are the most valuable lessons learned and how can they be utilized in managing the town moving forward?
Never underestimate something. Having been on the, having been chair of the Board of Health this year during the pandemic, you can never underestimate what's in front of you. When the pandemic started, I don't think we had any idea what could happen or what was going to happen with the shutdowns, with the masks. And you just can't underestimate anything.
Do you think-
And I look forward to bringing that perspective to the Select Board by, you know, not underestimating anything, whether it's an override or community, just the community in general.
Okay, so talking about how not to underestimate things that come up. Pembroke obviously had to pivot greatly during the last year. Things that we were going to do, we didn't do. Every day, things were changing. What do you think was the most valuable lessons that we learned about communicating, especially with the position you were in during these past 14 months?
Um, you have to be honest with the public. You have to be truthful. And I think that I did that over the last year. And, you know, at times, I maybe say things that are very blunt, but it's coming, it's coming from the heart, you know? Like, wearing the mask this year was not something I had ever anticipated having to sign an order to enact. And we did that before the state actually did. I just, there's a lot of things I learned.
Okay.
That was, you know.
That was a big one, yeah, for all of us. So, question number two.
Yes.
What aspects of town government need fixing the most and the least?
Well, I think that we just, we just got in with it. We just hired a town manager. We really haven't even given him the room to, you know, spread his wings yet. I think that the town needs to, the town and the boards need to adjust to a town manager. And I think that's one of the things that I have to, or we as a town have to work towards. I don't think anything is the, I think it just all needs to be worked out under the town manager because he's our skipper. You know, he's our leader. He's the one that we, go ahead, Julie.
So, what do you mean by you have to adjust to the new town manager? Like, what changes where we used to have a town administrator? What has changed so the public understands what that means?
Well, the town manager has a lot more, a lot more abilities than a town administrator. He can set things, he can make, you know, he's what it stops with, you know what I mean? The Select Board has become almost an advisory board to, not an advisory board per se. We're still a Select Board, but, still a Select Board, but it's, you have to be able to, they have to work more with the manager now because the manager is trying to manage us and lead us in the right direction.
Okay. All right, that's good. And what about what we do well in the town? What have we done really, really well all along? What's good about the town, the way it's governed?
Speaking of Board of Health's perspective, I think the Board of Health does a fantastic job. I think Lisa Kelly is awesome what she does. I think the DPW really tries. I think the Police Department is fantastic. I think the Fire Department is fantastic. They're all dealing with, you know, the shortcomings of not having a good facility to run. I think, you know, maybe recreation, it has to, you know, they're dealing with a building that's crumbling. And, you know, with the new facility, we would be, they may be able to have a better showing or have more people come or make, you know, make it better for the town.
Okay, great. Let's go to question three. There are pros and cons to having those with long tenure sitting on elected boards versus those who may be newly elected to the position. What is your view on board turnover?
So, speaking from having been on the Board of Health for as long as I have, when you're on a, when you're on a board for a long period of time, you find out what the layout of, or how everything works in town, basically, how everything flows in town. So, there's good points for having, you know, people be on boards for a long period of time. But then, there's times where the town does need to change because it needs to move forward. And if it hasn't moved forward with their tenure there, with whoever's been there, then it's time for a change. Do I think there should be term limits? Yeah, I guess. I mean, my father-in-law served on the Board of Select, the Select Board for a really long time, and he's very well-respected in town. He always, you know, he always, he was, he was truly what a member of Select Board should be. Very level-headed, and he served a really long time. So, I don't know, I kind of go either way with having term limits, to be honest. You know, I think the voters should real, like, recognize, you know, if somebody's not doing good in that position or the position is not being led the right way, then, you know, maybe it's time to move on from that person or persons.
And just one other thing as far as being on a board or serving on a board or committee. How important is communication? And do you feel that boards communicate well in the town of Pembroke?
No, I don't. I think, for whatever reason, I feel like communication in the past has been lacking. I know, obviously, we just hired a town manager, and I feel like it's improved. But in the past, I felt like, no, it was not the best communication in town.
Okay, all right, great. So, let's go on to your rapid-response 20-second question. You're going to have 20 seconds to answer this. So, they ask you something, just whatever comes to mind first. If you were given $3 million to spend in any way you could for the town of Pembroke, how would you spend it?
Sidewalks, without a doubt. I would spend it on sidewalks for entrance, yeah, entrances into the school, the main roads. I mean, it'd probably be a lot more than that. $3 million is a lot of money, but not when it comes to construction these days. Yeah, that's the one cry I hear. And we need sidewalks. We definitely need sidewalks.
All righty, that came right to mind, thank you. So, now, we are actually ready for your closing remarks. So, you'll have two minutes to talk about whatever you want. Go right ahead.
On, thank you, Julie, I appreciate it. Thank you for having me again. On June 26th, I ask you to come out and cast your vote for me. I feel as though I can be a voice, like I said before, between people that just came to this town and people that have been here for years. I plan on sticking around a long time. I'm not looking to elevate myself into any other position. I want to serve the town, and I have nothing but the Pembroke's best interest at heart. I think that we're in a, we're in a fork in the road here. And I think we need leadership, and I believe I can provide that. On June 26th, please come out and vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tommy, for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. We're going to get right into your opening statement. Karen, you're going to have two minutes. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Karen Rayner, and as Julie said, I'm running for one of two seats on the Select Board for election in June. I have 25 years of experience in managing operations, infrastructure, and technology strategies to drive operational and fiscal sustainability in the corporate nonprofit sectors. I most recently oversaw and provided strategic direction for the operations and administrative departments of New England Conservatory in Boston. If elected, I will bring the experience I have from facilities and operations management, change management, and budget management to add to the experience of colleagues on the board, now town manager, as he and his team work to provide a better budgeting process and infrastructure planning process for the town. Pembroke will need to emerge from the remaining months of the global pandemic with a plan in place for getting back to a steady state while identifying areas for future growth and development. We must also recognize the financial and mental health impacts this pandemic has had on many of our residents as well as how our small businesses have been affected, and we must plan accordingly. I joined my husband on the South Shore 20 years ago, relocating from Chicago. My husband grew up in the area and needed little convincing to get me to move east. We first lived in Quincy, then Amington. And three years ago, a house on my brother-in-law's street in Pembroke came on the market, and being very familiar with the towns through our family visits, we made the move. We knew the schools were good, and we wanted to live closer to our family. We have loved living here. Our children are in the public schools, one at the high school, the other at North Pembroke. My husband is involved in the town's youth sports, and I have gotten involved in the recycling center, the PTO, Pembroke for Racial Justice, where we are working closely with the Pembroke Police Department and our other community groups in addition to supporting local charities. We also love the many trails and conservation areas, and we feel very lucky to have this luxury in Pembroke. I've gotten to know many of our small business owners, town leadership, and I've spent time with our chief of police and fire chief. I believe that strong relationships built on mutual respect are the cornerstone to functional relationships at all levels, and I would bring that mindset to the board.
Thank you. Okay, question number one. Given what we have experienced in the past year, what are the most valuable lessons learned and how can they be utilized in managing the town moving forward?
One of the things I think our town has learned, especially with the COVID pandemic, is to plan for the unexpected. I think that the town tried to do everything in its power from PMA and to our Board of Health to be able to be ready for our residents in town for the pandemic. But they had to pivot time and time again, whether it was vaccines or other social services. I saw people in town pivot over and over, and I think that's something we always need to be ready for. I think that the other thing that is very difficult is that we had some capital improvement planning and fiscal planning that was put in place. Of course, we have our brand-new town manager who put together a significant amount of planning for his first year in office. And then, with the pandemic, a lot of that has been put on the back burner. As much as we can do things in conjunction with something as huge as a global pandemic, I think we're starting a little bit behind with where we need to be. And so, the more we can run things parallel in the future, I think we need to strive to do that.
How do you think we can catch up with some of the things that we lost over that year? I mean, how do we, how do we regroup and charge forward to where we were two years ago, for example?
It's a good question. I think it's going to take everyone working together and growing in the same direction. I think that there are a lot of towns around us that have good boilerplates and blueprints for what we did, you know, what they were doing three or four years ago that we're able to look at and we're able to see what was successful for them and what didn't work for them so that we can avoid some of those similar missteps. But there's certainly a lot of work that's going to need to be done in the coming year to get us back to steady state.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's go to question two. In your opinion, what aspects of our town government need fixing the most and the least?
In my opinion, I do think that the recent vote, for example, on the town moderator, moving from a one-year position to a two-year position that's going to be on the town, at the town meeting, I think that's, those are the kind of things that we need to be doing. We need to be looking at what we do on a regular basis that is status quo, that we've always done, and we need to make sure that we're always looking for improvements. The other thing that I think would be very helpful going forward, we don't have the type of infrastructure to support the town growth. We don't have regular maintenance crews. We don't have IT help. We don't have any human resources department for Town Hall services. And we have a growing staff. You wouldn't have a business without those services. So, I think we need to look at that structure going forward.
And are you surprised that we don't have that structure in place now? And are you, can you comment on how well the town has done without those actual structures in place?
Yeah, I mean, you hear it time and time again, whether you're watching meetings or participating in meetings, catching the live stream. You know, our town continuously does more with less. We hear it over and over again. We punch above our weight over and over. There's a little bit of surprise. There are collaboratives that we could join. There are ways that we can do this where it won't be as expensive as if we had our own departments supporting these services. We outsource a lot, and so, we could probably look at other towns that outsource and see what kind of collaboration we can do in order to save money and not overburden the taxpayers. But with how many staff we have, I do think it's time for us to look at at how we can support our Town Hall better.
And finally, in the same vein, what do you think Pembroke does really well as managing themselves?
I think that as a town, the community aspect of our town is amazing. From the day that we walked in, we have felt welcomed. We have felt doors open for us, and I think that's top-down. I think our, the community that you find at Town Hall, people are willing to help other people, what we saw during the pandemic, from donations to the food pantry, to neighbors helping neighbors. I think that the timing was great, that we were able to all come together during this past year so that we could help each other out. And I think that's, that comes from the way that people are in our Town Hall.
Okay, thank you, that's great. And let's go on to the third question. There are pros and cons to having those with long tenure sitting on an elected board versus those who may be newly elected to the position. What is your view, pro and con, on turnover with a board?
There is definitely some concern. You need that longevity. You need people who know what they're doing. There is definitely a learning curve when you're coming into a position like this. On the other hand, I think sometimes it's hard when you're so close to a process or to a system. It's very hard sometimes to look for efficiencies and to look for a new way to do it. So, I think having a mixture, actually, of people who were born and raised in Pembroke and put down roots and plan on staying, people who have families that date back to the beginning of the founding of the town, I think that their voices are incredibly important. But I also think new voices are also important because you- because you bring a very different perspective and you have different ideas. It's, it's definitely a balance. It's a little bit of a yin and yang.
Okay, agreed. And what about, um, communication? How, how important do you think that, uh, the ability to communicate either between themselves on the board or outward to all the residents and all the other departments they have to, um, deal with? Speak to that, communication.
Sure. Communication and relationships, I think, are key in positions like this. We've got so many volunteers, people that give up their times there in the evening and on the weekends to be able to provide public service to our town. Um, that's, that's what keeps our town running along with our phenomenal, uh, teams in town halls. So I think communication and, and relationship building is absolutely vital in order to have a well-functioning town government. I also think that accessibility and transparency are really important. We need to be honest with the townsfolk of the residents and taxpayers of Pembroke. They need to know where we are fiscally. They need to know what our options are for planning for the future. Um, that's something that I absolutely would be committed to if I'm lucky enough to be elected.
Okay, thank you. Now I have the gotcha question. Um, you, it's, I call it my 20-second rapid response question. Okay, so just off the top of your head, I want you to answer this as best you can. And you're going to have 20 seconds to answer. If you were given $3 million to spend in any way and for any part of the town, how would you spend it?
I would, I would have a capital investment plan and I would look at our infrastructure. Uh, we have aging infrastructure. We have a town hall that needs a complete renovation and refar, refresh. Our town center also needs some significant work done. Uh, the plans for the community center, uh, you know, it's a beautiful building and would provide services from, you know, newborns to our seniors. And, and without question, I, our $3 million would go towards, uh, infrastructure.
Okay, great. Thank you. And now we are ready for your closing remarks. And you are going to have two minutes to do those, so go right ahead.
Thank you again for having me, Julie, and thank you to everyone who's watching from home. Pembroke is at a transition point. Coming out of the pandemic, our focus should be on the creation of a master plan and a capital investment plan so we can lay out a vision and goals for our future and also better anticipate how to mitigate or entirely reconstruct our aging town buildings. With our most recent building project, our public library, being more than 20 years old, there are infrastructure needs, normal wear and tear that we must have a plan for in order to ensure the building can continue to service the town well into the future. A solid capital investment and maintenance plan also enables a smoother budget process from year to year so taxpayers can better understand and anticipate the overarching needs of the town's infrastructure. From the upcoming vote on the community center to the needs of our public safety services and Department of Public Works, we cannot continue to leave renovations and rebuilding to the future. We need creative solutions that won't overburden our taxpayers. I love getting to live in Pembroke and I am deeply invested in the town's growth and future success. We need to ensure we're planning for the future and not just maintaining the status quo. Pembroke has incredible promise to thrive as we come out of the pandemic, so long as we have the proper planning in place. If you're looking for a candidate who will work hard for the future of Pembroke, I hope to have your vote for the select board. Please make your plan now to vote on or before June 26th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. Thank you for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. So Dan, uh, we're going to start right into your opening statement. You're going to have two minutes. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Julie. Hello, everyone. My name is Dan Trabuco and I'm running for reelection as a member of the Town of Pembroke Select Board. There are two seats available and I respectfully ask for one of your votes. Why should you vote for me? I would invite the people of Pembroke to look at my passion and commitment toward the duties of a member of the select board and not just what occurs during select board meetings, but outside of town hall as well, by my working on various subcommittees and speaking with citizens who have issues that need to be addressed. I make a conscious effort to look at all sides of an issue and contemplate what is best for the town as a whole when making a decision. On account of this thought process, I've, I've been told that they like the way I speak when talking about a controversial issue, since I inform the public on the background and help to provide them with insight on the issue to the greatest extent possible. I help the people read between the lines. I try to make thinking rationally on how to achieve balance in all matters that come before the selectmen my hallmark. Experience in municipal government, knowing how it works in Pembroke are important factors when choosing someone to vote for. I've been a member of the select board for 12 years and previously an elected member of the planning board for seven years and have served on various town committees and councils. This job is much more than one meeting per week. The work itself and contributing to the community is enjoyable. My vision of Pembroke's future is maintaining the nature of the suburban town that I moved into 24 years ago. While during my 12 years as a select board member, I've worked to modernize the town by implementing curbside recycling, chairing the committee that created the capital fund so that infrastructure can be purchased and maintained in an orderly fashion and literally change the town government by forming the town manager form of government. As a three-year member of the community center task force, I am an ardent supporter of the building a new community center here in Pembroke. I like my job and I'm told that I'm good at it. I would ask you to consider casting your vote for me on June 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into the first question. Given what we have experienced in the past year, what are the most valuable lessons learned and how can they be utilized in managing the town moving forward?
So, 2020 was a very difficult year for, for all of us. And it was a difficult year for the town of Pembroke in that we formed the town manager position. And the town manager's first full years was during this trying time. So I think, uh, as a select board, working with the new town manager and how that town manager works with the, uh, the department heads and the rest of the, the town, uh, other boards and committees as well, I think we've learned how to, um, uh, work through adversity in, in a good way. And I hope that this coming year, uh, the select board and the town manager, uh, can go forth even stronger.
Would you do anything different, um, from what you've done? I, I, I know you, you talked about the, the town manager and how important that was and what a difference it made. Looking back at, at how the select board reacted to everything that went on, would you do anything differently or do you feel that you did what you needed to do at the time?
Oh, I think, I think we, as a group, uh, did everything that we could for the public, for the public health and safety and still maintained open government throughout the, this year. So I think we did everything, uh, is, to the best of our ability.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're going to go on to the second question. In your opinion, what aspects of Pembroke's town government need fixing the most and what needs fixing the least?
What needs fixing the most is to implement some of the things that we, that we, that came into play in 2020. Uh, one of, one of them, uh, certainly is the, the capital fund and our capital plan. Uh, Pembroke has always had, uh, a, a, a capital plan, but it's never, it's been a haphazard way to fund it. And we fix that by having a capital fund that is, uh, that is built by the town manager and brought forth at town, at the spring town meeting. Previously, it had been done on a haphazard way at fall town meeting where there's a money grab for whatever money was left over from the spring town meeting. So I think we fixed that, but we haven't had a chance to truly implement it because of COVID last year. So that's the big thing we need, we need to fix. Uh, what's the least thing we need to fix is we don't have to fix the town manager, town administrator position because it has already been fixed.
Okay. Is there anything in, in the town's, uh, infrastructure that you think needs to be addressed? Any departments, any, are there any missing pieces in the town that, that you think we need to work on?
So, buildings. We need buildings in town. We need a new community center. We need a new police station. We need a new fire station. And the DPW needs a new storage facility. So those are the large items. And, and now that we have, uh, the capital plan and we have a capital plan to, uh, address long-term needs and how to fund those and, and how to look forward on them, so it's not a surprise, is, is one part of that. Another part of that is the, the, the town meeting article and the ballot question that's coming up this year for the community center. So that's another issue. And, and the roads for the DPW. The DPW has always had a plan in place to, to reconstruct the roads, repave the roads and maintain the roads. But they've never had the funding. With the, with the new capital plan setup, they can now logically gain the money and, and, and build the roads in a logical manner.
Okay, so that, that capital fund really is a, is a huge, in your opinion, is, is a, it's a really game changer for, for a lot of reasons for the, for the town. Um, let's go on to question three.
Absolutely.
Okay, there are pros and cons for having those with long tenure sitting on an elected board versus those who may be newly elected. What is your position for, uh, the whole subject of board turnover?
So it's difficult to get people involved in, in town government to begin with because, you know, face it, everyone's busy in life, uh, and, and for all good reasons. You're raising your family, you're taking your kids to, uh, to the ballgame and soccer practice, um, or you're coaching, work. Uh, so the, the work-life balance is hard for everyone to begin with. So to ask someone to, uh, pull away from that work-life balance and add something to it, um, you know, contributing to the town, whether it's on a, a board or a committee, it's, it's very difficult and it's hard to do in this day and age. So when you have someone like myself that, that has been committed to, to sharing their work-life with the town, uh, I think that the people should embrace that. So if someone's a long-term member that is contributing in, in a, in a positive way and continues to contribute, I think that that person should be, uh, allowed to continue in that. And then also, we, we all welcome the, the new folks that want to come in and, uh, and, and take over for, in, in, in share their work-life, uh, balance with the town.
Uh, and to just piggyback on something that you also said in your opening statement about how, um, being a, a member of the select board in, in Pembroke is not a once-a-week job. Can you just speak a little bit of how much time is actually spent, um, for this really basically unpaid position for anyone who's on the, the board of selectmen?
Sure, sure. For, for all of us. And then in, in every select board member had, has, um, has their side roles, their subcommittees. And so, subcommittee meetings, depending on how many you're, you're on, uh, can be a couple of nights a week. It could be, it could be a couple of nights a week, um, at a stretch. And then there, there could be a stretch where it's only, it's only in the select board meeting. So it, it goes up and down. But then it could also be in the weekend. You're taking, like, this past weekend, I took a walk in the woods, uh, to look at the River Marsh 40B project. And literally in the woods, through the thorn bushes, to, to look at the wetlands there where they're going to drop this behemoth of a 40B project that, that I am opposed to. So, um, the, the, if you have a full commitment to the select board, uh, it could be multiple nights.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now I'm going to ask you your 20-second rapid response question. Okay, you're going to only have 20 seconds to answer this. So just what comes to the top of your head. If you were given $3 million to spend in any way you want for the town of Pembroke, how would you spend it?
$3 million doesn't go very far in, in town if, uh, if you want to have a large capital project. So $3 million would need to go to, uh, the basis of a large capital project. Design development of, of a one or multiple, uh, capital developments. And that's, that's where I would focus that money.
Okay, so we, uh, for a, for a design or development of a capital project. Okay, thank you. And now, Dan, we're ready for your closing remarks and you're going to have two minutes. Go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Julie. Well, we need two minutes. I, I don't have anything written down for this other than to say that, uh, I've been working hard for the town of Pembroke for, for a long time and I want to continue to work hard for the town of Pembroke. I enjoy sharing my home and work-life balance by contributing to the town. So I would ask that you consider voting, voting for me on June 26th. And keep in mind that the election day has changed. It is now June 26th. So there are two seats up. I ask for one of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck through your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, June 26th. Thank you and good day.